Today is Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022. It's a meeting of the Christian Board of Appeals. Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Please rise up. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the people of our home, for which it stands one nation, and for our individual liberty and justice for all. Gentlemen, I am going to take an appointment out of order. I'm going to skip executive session in a minute. For now, we're giving mail to the appointment of Mr. Randy DeTerra, who's expressed an interest to serve on the zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. DeTerra, if you would, just stand up and tell us a little bit about yourself, why you want the position, and we'll go from there.
Good afternoon, Board, town administrator. I've been a resident in the town my whole life, pretty much, off and on. I went to college up in northern Vermont for about four years and lived in New Hampshire for a couple of years after that. But since then, coached the kids, moved back here 25 years ago, been working at Verizon ever since. And all my coaching days have done and set a little more time on my hands and I'd like to get involved in it. And I always knew that the Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, always seems like they're always struggling to have people and always need an alternate. So I just figured, you know, throw my hat in the ring and see if I can come aboard.
That's great. It's a really important board. And so thank you for stepping up. Gentlemen, any questions?
No, I'd just like to thank Mr. DeTerra for throwing his name in the ring. And I know Mr. DeTerra for quite some time. He's an outstanding individual and I'm sure that he'll do the taxpayers of the Christian very well in the future. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to appoint Mr. DeTerra to the zoning Board of Appeals?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations. Night, Rex.
Thank you, guys.
So I guess you just have to get with the town clerk to get sworn in. And then you'll be ready to roll.
All right, I'll contact her in the morning.
Yeah, I'll get the appointment because I have to make up an appointment. So I'll get the appointments up and then I'll give it to PM and she can...
All right. Thank you. Take care.
Have a good night.
All right, we will now go into executive session. So and we will return back to regular session. So is there a motion to go into executive session under General Law 30A subsection 21A3 to conduct strategy in preparation for negotiations with union personnel or to conduct contract negotiations with union personnel? As me, if an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body as the chair so declares and the Board will return to public session. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Mr. Gasper.
Yes.
Mr. Hinckley?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. We are now going into executive session. All right, we'll go back in regular session. We will, some of our appointments are coming in at 5:30. So we're going to move from the DPW-related items. We're going to table item number one on the new business, collective bargaining ratifications. There's a motion to table.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Item number two is the building inspector vacancy. Mr. ... Mr. ...
Yes.
Kelly. Bobby, how's it going?
Okay.
Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
I'm well.
All right. Mr. Kelly, you're going to do the building inspectors, though?
Correct. As you know, the building commissioner and this board instructed me to look into a building inspector. I advertised for it. I talked to the state. They put it out on their statewide bulletin. Then I did a deep dive into the statute and the regulations, which talk about building official and building commissioner versus inspector of buildings. The same qualifications. It just seems that building commissioners are for towns a lot larger than this. And inspector of buildings are what they call the people who do that job in towns this size. So we advertise for inspector of buildings. It's, you will see, it's at least five years' experience in supervision of building construction or a four-year undergraduate degree or any combination thereof, and then general knowledge in a number of things. There is also a position called local inspector. It does, it has some of the same qualifications, but not all. The difference is inspector of buildings... Well, let me back that up. Local inspector cannot issue occupancy permits, cannot inspect commercial establishments, cannot inspect liquor establishments, and cannot do a number of the annual inspections for various towns like theaters, et cetera. It's really someone who can come in and inspect a building which is in the process of going up. The, when I went into the regulations very deeply, I found out that you can, this board can appoint a conditional inspector who has the qualifications, but not the certification. And he has to, within six months, apply to the state for the certification and within 18 months, gain the certification. I talked to one individual who had all the quality qualifications that the state would want. We advertised at $75,000. He said that he also applied to Fairhaven, which is advertising at 90. And he presently works for the city north of here, not as a building inspector, but as a local. So he said that he was making as much there, or a little more, actually.
So it seems like you're looking more for an inspector of buildings than you would be a local inspector.
Correct. Now, we'll have to wait and see if... And but my main point here is you're probably not going to be able to attract one, but you can grow your own. Appoint one conditionally, give him the 18 months to acquire the certification. Now, the question is, we've had one person ask about it at 75, but say it was not enough. The past building commissioner was getting 84 plus another $10,000 stipend.
Because he had a commissioner's license.
Yep. So I don't know if you want me to continue at 75 or re-advertise at a different rate. That's up for the Board to discuss. But my advice is grow your own.
Of course.
Because I've been told that there's a lack of actually certified candidates statewide. Right now, we have Mr. Marat coming in doing inspections at $30 an inspection. And Mr. Bobola, who's the interim down in Fairhaven, would be willing to do the same thing. Both are certified.
Okay.
And now, so I ran into an individual that has a problem because when you and I had talked and asked for that 30 bucks per inspection, we do that with our gas and our electrical inspector. And then it came to my attention that people have applied for a building permit and they've got demolition permits, whatever it may be, to knock down an existing building and move forward. And that was under Mr. Marat's review already. So is that something that we could allow to continue, Mr. Marat, if it's already been under his review? Not saying all new stuff, but anything that was, a permit was applied for and under Mr. Marat's review already, right? There's a lag there of several months. Is that something that we could also allow Mr. Marat to continue issuing a building permit for?
Correct.
Instead of just inspections, can we authorize him?
He can, he can do all of that, and so can Mr. Bobola.
Yeah, just, it's heartbreaking to listen to somebody that's been through that ringer and, you know, the cost of goods are going up and da-da-da, interest rates are going up, and they're caught now in limbo. And if Mr. Marat's being kind enough to come in and do some inspections, you know, final inspections and provide the occupancy permits for everybody to do what they need to do, I think maybe it would be in our best interest to allow for him to, any permits that were under review in the past, to move forward with those as well.
Right. Before we, I think we can address that with item number three, is the appointing them as the temporary building inspector.
Temporary, it's...
But can we go back to the first, the first discussion, which is, do we want to keep the salary at 75? Or do we, based on Mr. Kelly's report back, do we need to bump up that proposed salary to attract candidates? Because it seems like we may be, you know, under...
A little bit behind the curve.
Yeah, right.
So in Fairhaven, when I thought I seen that advertisement, 84 to 102 or something like that. So they have a salary range. And I had a conversation with Mr. Kelly saying, you know, you're always better off putting a salary with a plus or minus DOQ depending on qualifications. So it kind of leaves a little window spread that you have some room to adjust with certain people. I mean, somebody comes in with 20 years' experience and they say, hey, I'll do it, but I want 80. You know, that's within that purview. And I understand that the town of Fairhaven is a lot bigger than the town of McCushness. So the scale on pay should be a little bit higher to like one and a half times our population in all the commercial buildings and things of the like. So, yeah, I'd be, I mean, I think he first had a first number and I said to him, I think that's a little bit low.
Yep.
And I get it. But in today's marketplace, I think everybody at home needs to understand, in today's marketplace, it's hard to bring in new help, right? There's the people, the jobs of, I don't know where all the people went because of COVID, but they've gone somewhere and nobody wants to work anymore for, you know, whatever wage. And I guess everybody thinks they're worth six figures. So at this point, you are kind of in that stranglehold where you might be forced to pay a little extra. But it's still within the salary range of what we already have.
We had 94 books.
Still in the budget.
All right, we had 94 books. So we want to go between 75 and 85?
I'm fine with that.
And then we know internally that if we've got a...
I'm fine with that.
Okay. All right, so to adjust the salary range to 85?
Well, 75 to 85.
All right, 75 to 85.
Uh, DOQ.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Depending on DOQ.
Is there a motion to set the salary range from 75 to 85?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, so the next item, number three, would be to a temporary, to appoint temporary building inspectors, Mr. Marat and Andrew Bobola. And then that would empower them to do the things that you're talking about.
This is to cover the town legally.
Yep.
Technically, we could ask the state to have asked them to come in. And they could come in. But this will, what the appointment of the Board covers them, the professional actions with our insurance, and it protects the town.
All right, is there a motion to appoint Mr. Marat and Mr. Bobola as temporary building inspectors for the town of McCushness?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Great, thank you. So it looks like our building department is squared away, at least for the time being. So hopefully we can find an appropriate candidate. And, you know, I know...
We're going to throw a wider net now. We know we can grow our own.
Right, okay. Next item is, let's just, if it's all right, we're going to just do this real quick so we can move on and then get into our appointments. Mr. Kelly, financial vacancy status. We've got a number of vacancies in the assessors, treasurer collector, town accountant.
No, not in the assessors. Those are the three major legs in the finance school.
Yep, yep.
And our problem is we've got interim town accountant, interim treasurer collector. Both are very qualified, but you're going to, at some point, have to figure out how you look at that department. I was in a meeting with DOR, with Mr. Hassett, who's our consultant interim town accountant. And he is very confident that within a year, the assistant accountant, as long as he goes through and takes the exams, would be capable of stepping in with mentoring from Mr. Hassett in the future. And DOR went through it and went through the discussion. And they said, a year, 18 months, as long as he passed all the exams, they'd be fine with it. I was happy to hear that. As far as the town treasurer collector, we advertised at $65,000. That's low. And we're going to, I would ask that we just wait until the next meeting because Marilyn is coming, our interim treasurer collector is coming in. She has some recommendations to the Board as far as the operations in that office. And we might want to look at something there. Because both Mr. Hassett and Ms. Thompson, uh, Thompson, I'm sorry, are going to report to the Board on what they've found in those offices. We have issues going back to 2008.
All right. Well, I guess, gentlemen, I think we've got two strong employees that are in the, on the farm team right now, right? In the treasurer collector's office and the town accountant's office. So if we can figure out a way to bridge the gap and get these folks as much training as possible, I think that's probably the best bet for our long-term stability. So if we can hang in there, that would be my, you know...
The problem is going to be in the treasurer collector's office. Marilyn told us upfront that she'd get us through the Fall Town meeting, but she wasn't going, she's retired.
Yep.
So she can't take a job full-time.
Right.
Mr. Hassett said he'd be around as long as we need him.
Okay.
So we've got to look at that. But I think when they report to you what they found, we're going to have to look at keeping them around a while because the light at the end of the tunnel on fixing everything that needs to be fixed is there, but we haven't got to the end of the tunnel yet.
Good, okay. Gentlemen?
And as you can see from the memo, there are some serious issues.
Well, David, I'm glad, we're going to, want to put this on the agenda to get ahead of this, but really the real conversation will happen at our next meeting with the finance team. There's no action on this?
Just so you know, I've invited, we've invited the finance committee chair to be there, too.
All right, let's go back to DPW. Dan, I know you're up first, but if Mr. Costello was here, and so I'm going to jump around, which I think his item will be pretty easy. Mr. Costello, you have a welcome to the Board. You have a request for a street opening. As you know, the Board put a moratorium on street openings. It's not targeting people like yourself, but really the utilities, Mr. Gasper, Mr. Kelly have worked to hold those and to hold utilities accountable. I think we're hopefully getting some momentum to getting things squared away. But so we decided as a Board, we take things up case by case. And so if you could just tell us about your request?
This is a bit of a ladder with a picture of the hydrant and a request to allow us to tap into the main in order to extend the warranty for DPO states.
Okay. Gentlemen, Mr. Gasper, you're our resident expert on this issue.
Now, I, you know, I understand that Mr. Costello, he's done some work with the planning board. I guess it was Mr. Coska that you bought some development rights off of.
Yes.
And there's been some conversation about a stormwater permit, and that's Mr. Manad's actually...
Not a conversation about stormwater, yes.
Yeah, I know. Unfortunately, it seems like that situation's gotten tangled into a giant web. And I've been accused by some people that I'm trying to waive the stormwater permit for your project. So we're just...
We didn't use it. We didn't even have...
No, not from you, not from you, from some folks around, skittering around. So neither here or there, I just wanted to put that out in public record so that everybody knows it's a false claim. I'm not trying to waive anything for anybody. And now it's true because Mr. Costello is actually in front of us. I know Mr. Manad's here and he said something to me that in a lesson until, I don't know, Mr. Manad, I don't want to speak for you, but I remember something about planning signed off on it and stormwater signed off on it. You, because we authorized already, just so Mr. Costello, and I know he's got his, one of his developers here to do the work, we actually authorized the DPW to be able to move forward with water and sewer tie-ins. And technically, you're not a street opening because you're going into the woods pretty much from the end of the road.
Correct.
But I know there was a hangup, I'm assuming, over stormwater permitting for the project as a whole. Mr. Kelly was bummed there. I happened to be in on that conversation and I was kind of blown away at it, but...
I've been blown away on it. I was totally surprised by it. We've been talking about this for several months now, until recently, we got an opinion from Mr. Kelly, I think to your town council, to regarding the same matter. So they are requesting that I apply for the stormwater permit, which I have retained an engineer to do it. And also I get my attorney looking at the rights that we have because all the subdivision was approved back in 2017. And all the work regarding the stormwater, I assume, was all part of the subdivision, which is the three detention points that we have on the plans, as you can probably see the plan. So I feel, I feel I've been given a runaround here for several, several months now. And I have called several people and no one even returns the calls anymore. I'd like to ask now, if I could, what's the policy? If I have a question about something that I have a clear on or something that's a problem that needs to be addressed, who do I call? What's the process? Because I've been calling department heads and nobody returns the phone calls.
Mr. Kelly.
And he came in to see me. I've worked through it. We looked into it. And I asked for an opinion of town council on what he had to do. And council came back and said he's been approved through the planning board. This, he's fine with conservation. They just had to establish the boundaries. I think that was correct for the hay bales.
Yes.
And that was done. And it's, the only thing he said was, the town council said in his opinion was there was no approval in the past for stormwater permit. And so he has to come in for the stormwater permit. The question is before us whether this is actually a street opening on, because Mr. Costello wants to put a water main into the project.
And the drainage.
I'm sorry?
And the drainage.
Yeah, drain, yeah, of course. You're going to, before you develop the road, you're going to dig out the road, you're going to put water mains in and put your drainage pipe in, and then you're going to put asphalt. You're not going to do the opposite, right? I, I don't know, and I, and I guess I'll apologize for whatever people that you're trying to get a hold of. It's not on me, but I will apologize to you because I know you've been a little delayed on this back and forth thing, Mr. Costello. But I don't know what we have the right to do. And I don't know, we, I don't know if the town's established a criteria, in other words, for when somebody's going to go in. And your developments, I think if I remember that correctly, it was like 15 homes or something like that inside that development? 15 homes?
15 lots, yes.
15, roughly 15 lots? So I know we've had some problems with, you know, what goes under peer review for stormwater. Is it one-house lot? Is it five-house lots or more, whatever it may be? So I, I, I've always had a problem with the structure of town government where if somebody's going to go in, like yourself, and apply to the planning board and get plans approved for certain things, building commissioner, building inspector's okay with it. Where is, isn't there supposed to be like a circle around to make sure everybody's input is in first prior to anybody moving forward with the project? And that's kind of where I'm getting aggravated at the process. And I can understand your frustration because I'm an elected representative. And I, and I look at the, it's kind of like people are starting to put the cat before the horse. And, you know, I don't think that makes any sense from, from our perspective. I think it looks very unprofessional. So I'll, I'll get that out on, off my chest right now. So I, I think that Mr. Kelly, along with the building inspector, maybe not this one, but the next one, the planning board, conservation, border health, everybody that needs to be involved, needs to be involved from the beginning of the project and look at the project and say, here's the plans that were brought to the planning board. Before planning board approves it, what's your input? What needs to be done? So that when the petitioner, as yourself is, comes in, that can all be brought up to you before planning board goes, yeah, we'll approve the plans, but you're still going to jump through all these hurdles that are unknowns because nobody's telling you there are other hurdles, correct? That's where you ended up.
Well, let's give you a bit of a history of this whole, this subdivision. I started this project in 2015. Okay, it's been lingering for all these years. And before I closed on this property on January 21st, 2022, I went to all the departments to make sure that I will have no issues with this project. Make sure everything is clear. And I did my due diligence as far as that goes. So I assume when I'm ready to start the project, we're in the roads and I've been done with the other source and everyone else I need to deal with, that we should go in, apply for the permit and start going on and move on. And that's, has not been the case. So we've been here and I'm hoping that...
So as Mr. Kelly said, what's before us is whether or not to give him the approval to move forward with the, it's really not a road opening, but just a...
Yes, I got, I get, do you have a picture that I have?
Yeah.
Actually, the streets are already cut. It's not a new cut on the road. It's already there.
Yeah, the picture of the hydrant at the bottom of Park Drive, right?
Yes, I'm sorry. That's been patched already.
So just to reopen that? It's not even, I mean, it's not...
Technically, it's not a street.
What are we doing?
So you open the picture of the street?
So I guess the question...
It's at the very, it's at the very end of the road. So it's really not cutting into the street.
Right.
So he's just going to be tapping out right off and going right into his development, which is in the woods. It's not involved, nobody whatsoever. It's got, there's no houses there, so it's just...
Right, it's going into the woods. So I, again, I think the chairman just said, why is he here? And I guess it can be interpreted as you need a street open permit to go 10 frigging feet in tar, whatever it may be, into the dirt, whatever it may be. The bigger question that I have for everybody in the town that's supposedly, you know, the professionals is, why are we in this mess where it's like a three-ring circus and nobody knows what anybody else is doing? It should be as simple as a little template's put on. Everybody checks off and goes back to planning board and says, okay, here's Mr. Costello. Mr. Costello, you know there's a concern with conservation after reviewing your plans before we accept it with X, Y, and Z. Yep, I understand that. I got a file for a notice of intent for conservation. Okay, what else do I have to worry about? Nothing. Okay, no problem. And you, and you understand what it takes to develop that parcel of land.
Right. I thought they did.
But it seems pretty messy. And I don't know if, if that's something that we can...
We're, we're working on it now.
Once we had a building department set up?
And we had one, though. We had one.
We're working on it now. I've been working on it with the town planner and the, and the various boards, just like you described, Mr. Gasper. The problem is that the approval of some of this goes back to 2017. And some of those boards didn't approve everything they should. They didn't address.
I get it. And I'm more than happy, I'm more than happy to just say, yeah. The problem is, is does that get us caught up in this back and forth, you know, with all the crap that's being thrown around on social media about what we are doing and what we're not doing? Does it get us hung up as a board now going, see, they just circumvented this because they allowed him to go in and cut? And I'm okay because technically he's not speaking on it, but technically, I think, by what you just said, the town council's telling you is they need a stormwater permit.
They need a stormwater permit before they can go forward with the completion of the subdivision.
Oh, then I'm, if it's, if, look, Mr. Chairman, I apologize, but you didn't, you didn't...
Can I say something?
Yeah, absolutely.
So we got a couple of things going on with the moratorium. I understand you wanna stop people from cutting the street without, you know, approval and all that stuff. So that, that sector of this is just like one of the things that we're here for. The other thing about the stormwater permit is we can do the water main if you guys tell us we can cut the street, but then we're still held up about the stormwater and we're not getting the answers that we need about the stormwater because potentially that's holding up everything else that we need to do. So he has plans that have already been approved back in 2019, whenever it is. So the problem is now, as we go forward, now we're being told, no, you can't, you can't do the project. You can't finish the project. You can't do anything with the retention bonds because all that paper. What, if this was already approved, why is he being held up from continuing the work? If you guys already said it was okay to do the job?
I don't know if we can answer that tonight?
I can, I can answer, Mr. Chairman. Town council's opinion is there was not a stormwater approval done back when the various approvals were voted and it has to be done. And his advice is that it goes, Mr. Costello applies for a stormwater permit, goes through the process, gets the permit and then he's got all the permits he needs.
So I am scared. We're not gonna solve the stormwater permit thing tonight, but let's just go forward with what's before us.
Yeah.
And then we'll deal with the stormwater thing. We had other stuff going on tonight. I'm all, you know, sorry, just gave you the opportunity to vent a little bit. That's worth it. If you gave you the chance to vent, that's worth it, but we gotta get moving on with this thing. So is there a motion to approve the, the request to open up, what is it?
For the water main.
For the water main. Mr. Chairman? Hold on, there's a, there's a motion on the, I'm asking for a motion. If there's no motion, then it dies. There's your motion in a second, so we can discuss it.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say, all right, now it's up to discussion.
I'm really just concerned with going forward with this until it's resolved with the stormwater. And I just, I get nervous when you have an opportunity to do this and I hate to see it go further and then die out because there's no stormwater. So essentially, my question is, why do we need to do this now without having stormwater approval if there's a possibility that there's not gonna be an approval?
No, here's the thing. If we didn't put the moratorium in place, you guys would be doing, would be opening up the road, right? You wouldn't be before us, right? So we put the moratorium in place. This is as close to keeping this thing on track as we can come. I don't, I personally don't find it to be a, you know, a negative impact here. Stormwater issue is separate and above what's before us and we're just essentially turning back the clock as if we didn't have a moratorium here. And, you know, the moratorium wasn't directed at people like you. It was directed at the utilities who are doing a crappy job repairing the roads after they've done their work there. So my only, Mr. Manad's gonna stand up. I was gonna have to talk to him.
Well, just because, you know, discussing with, I also talked with Pat Han and Doug and they both kind of said it would be okay to move forward on this project. He didn't seem like he wanted to hold it up as far as that goes. So I think he was very confident that it would be okay with the stormwater. That's just coming from him.
Again, we wanna be, we're trying to, we're acting as if, the only reason why you're here is because we put the moratorium in place. We're pretty safe and sorry. So there's a motion on the floor. There's a second to approve the request and then the stormwater issue will be separate from this.
Mr. Manad, you've looked at the plans for Mr. Costello and no problems with the stormwater drainage, where it's, how it's being done and things like that. I know there's other questions of stormwater, but for, for drainage for the project and water mains and everything else, you're okay with everything that's happening because I'm sure you looked at these plans a long time ago as well.
Correct.
There you go. Okay, there's a motion on the floor. There's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Mr. Costello, you can now go to the next step, whatever that process may be. If you run, any issues?
Thank you.
Call Mr. Kelly.
If you can ask me, tell me what the process of, for a complaint or call someone regarding the problem.
See this gentleman right here?
It's, you have to, according to town council, you have to go forward with getting the required stormwater permit.
That's not what they asked.
He asked if he has an issue with town, come talk to Mr. Kelly. He's your problem solver.
Okay, he's the person to go to.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You know, Mr. Costello, you know my grandfather, like he used to say, why talk to the angels when you can talk to God? Go talk to them, all right?
Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you.
Good night. All right, we got the, let's go back to number one.
RAP.
The RAP project. And...
The podium.
Is the podium still in the hallway?
That's all right.
From a baseball thing, they just walked downstairs.
Okay. Do you have the sheet?
Yep.
Okay. So basically that's doing, again, it's in-house, but it's not like the Peckham Road from Gabriel Farms to Bow Drive. That would be a coal planing machine that will take out two inches because they're like all around that curve and everything's all broken up over there. So we're kind of looking to go from there to there, coal plan that out and it would be paved.
That's up over, up over the hill and come down to the opposite side, Bow Drive, heading towards New Bedford?
Correct. Right to the top of the hill. That's kind of what we're talking about, Bow Drive. Where Bow Drive comes out to Peckham.
Yeah, you don't, so Mr. Kelly and I sat with Kathy and went over all this because of the overage on Matafoys. I know we'll get to that, right? And it was pretty substantial. So we came up with, trying to figure out how we could still get these things done that were on the board's list of things to do.
Yeah.
And cover it without taking out too much expense from the budgeted line item for road paving that I got from excise tax. Remember that?
Correct, yep.
Yeah, I don't have that piece of paper in front of me, but this is saying a little bit different than what we talked about with Cath. You said you got Peckham, oh, you got, you got Peckham Road to Gabriel Farms.
Yep.
I thought that was Paddy Road. I, I apologize, but it's still...
It's a little different. I'm not sure how.
I think it was because you guys, you had something in there, Dan, for like twenty-eight grand for line painting or something like that from RAP.
Okay.
And, and I know, we don't see that now and we talked about being able to cover all the stuff that we had.
Yep.
And, and doing the cutoff at Pine Street on nine because of Ever Source's work up on, I think it's Oak Street, because Pine Drive goes this way, Pine Street, Pine Drive, Oak Street. Ever Source's coming in next year. We, Mr. Kelly and I made sure they expedite that. So that's why we can't go all the way to the top of Nice Lane for the people watching at home that are gonna yell at us, but, because they're gonna go in and cut that road and then they're gonna go down the side roads, a couple of other side roads, Kendricks, Randall and Hotley, okay? So we said, okay, we'll stop it at Pine Street.
Yep.
So it just...
So that would be the bottom one, so...
Yeah, no, if the money, does the money come out?
So that's counting, what you said, that's counting, you know, because that we get a IRL, we have a coal planing machine.
No, and you already calculated coal planing in these numbers, those seventy-eight grand to thirty-nine grand?
Yep.
And the Matafoys, it's already done. It's just the overage?
Yep.
And that was because of the width of the road and the price of asphalt.
Correct.
Okay, so see, this is, it's still coming up as a $10,000 shortfall.
We add all in three.
If I add all those three up, yeah, I come up with a tenth, and that's the same deficit we came up with before and we said that we would then cover that. There was something else in there with guardrails, something like that.
Well, the guardrails we didn't do yet, so that was the stuff on Lake Street, which is out in chapter ninety.
Okay, so you're gonna pull that from chapter ninety? So we're, we got roughly a seven, nine thousand dollar deficit? And I said that we would cover that nine thousand dollar deficit from the budgeted line item, road paving, a hundred grand? Mr. Kelly, is that correct what we had discussed?
Yep, I got the rule materials.
Okay, I'm just saying, because you've got a top line number.
Like we took, like in the past, we used to use the line painting coming out of my rule material budget. So I mean, that could happen as well, if you, you know what I mean?
All the road materials?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, Cath, I talked about that, that you could do that. So, I mean, and, and so it's still the same thing, Gabriel Farms to Bow Drive, that bad corner on Middle Road. And then Nice Lane doing that, milling that, milling that elacon. At the same day, we can bring that machine in and concomitant those projects, right?
Correct.
And then Matafoys at Road, the overage, because we allocated four hundred and change for it, but we came in ninety grand overall.
Well, the state papers, yeah, it was four feet wider than that. That state paper's been pretty accurate, but obviously it wasn't on this one. The road was four feet wider, so it's a mile and a half long, a little over a mile and a half, four feet wide and, and the, when we did this was a few years ago. So the price and mix went up by, I think it was eight dollars a ton since we did it. Yeah, eight dollars a ton since. So between that and that, that's where it came up a little wider.
At some point, we discussed it with Kathy, at some point, we're gonna have to look at the accepted roads as far as the computation with chapter ninety and make sure that it stands out, that the widths are not short and that we've got all the accepted roads in the chapter ninety. We're gonna have to do an audit for that because you're obviously in the past didn't get what you should've from chapter ninety because the state's figures were not correct.
Correct. They allocate off of road miles, so if that's not correct, you know what I mean? And so definitely know that a few streets, the new streets that didn't get, that are accepted, including Mr. O'Nah Street, is not, you know, into that state thing, so we should be getting funding as far as that. So normally we get like three hundred sixteen thousand a year, roughly. That should be more because they go, again, by road miles. If you get streets that are accepted and more as they get accepted, if we don't get them in there, they're not...
So that's, that's, that's a problem.
Yep, we're going to have to sit with the, once the town clerk's done with the primary election. Town clerk, Mr. Manad and Kathy at the DPW and we're gonna have to verify that the state has the proper list with all the accepted roads and that even some of the old roads that might not be on the list because they were colonial ways.
And, and I think we have to go do some, a lot of measurement, making sure all these are... I had, we had, there was a kid from the horse scouts and he started to do a few measurements and stuff on me, but it didn't, we was over an Eagle Scout project, so I tried to get him to do some of that. So we got a few of them. Try that again.
We're gonna find a lot of Eagle Scouts out.
We need lots.
You can do it by drone now.
Not for the actual, they want footage.
Yeah.
It's walking down the street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And some of them, some of the stuff too, like even Matafoys, I'm, I'm gonna be uniforming it when we put the top coat on, but with the binder, it, the road's just so many different, because that was just an old road done with chips heel and, you know, some spots twenty-six foot wide, twenty-eight foot wide, twenty-two, it's, it's kind of not uniform. So when I do the top, it's gonna be uniform. We're gonna do it at twenty-two foot wide and, you know what I mean? We're gonna tie it and so it's nicer, but now you got an accurate, you know.
All right. So I'll make a motion to approve the Peckham Road to Gabriel Farm, from Gabriel Farm to after Bow Drive, Matafoys at Road, the ninety thousand dollars to cover the deficit, Nice Lane, Middle Roads just after Pine Street, seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Right, second. So motion on the floor is the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And if there's any discrepancy, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Manad and I will meet with Kathy and present to the board if there's gotta be an addition. But you remember that with the RAP funds, we have to get this done because we have to spend it by the end of the calendar year.
He's all set?
Yep.
He's already spent ninety of them?
Yeah.
I think that's probably what it's under, like it's considered water rates, right? The territory development?
Oh, is it all there?
Yeah. No, it corresponds with the next item, right? Yeah. We could make it that way. There's a, item number two is water and sewer privilege fee for Seven Bradford Street. The assessment amount is four thousand six hundred and ten dollars and forty-one cents.
Yeah, sewer, just a sewer privilege fee, Mr. Chairman? The amount of two thousand six hundred and ten forty-one. Um, we have pre, we have previously approved two others on Bradford Street, ladies and gentlemen, so motion to approve Seven Bradford Street.
Your second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Correct.
Okay, old business, letter of interest to the housing authority. Sorry for keeping you for so long, but get to see firsthand how the wheels of government work. Let's see, where is this? Ca, are you Carol?
I'm Connie.
Connie, correct. Jerome? Jerome, okay. So Jerome, you, and Miss, uh, okay. What am I missing here? So you're Connie and are you with Mr., are you with Jerome?
Am I, I'm sorry?
Are you petitioning to be on the board, on the...
No, actually Jerome did a letter of intent to become the...
Yes.
Yeah, tenant board member.
Okay. All right. All right, so we have two, two people. Mr. Smith is the, I had a recommendation from, from Lynn. Okay. Jerome, if you wanna just tell us a little bit about yourself, if that's all right or...
He's, he's awfully sharp.
He's hard of hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, Jerome's hard of hearing.
Okay, all right, so if you can...
He had trouble communicating.
I'm, I'm gonna talk above you, okay?
Yeah.
I have limited time.
I see, now I understand what you're talking about.
Right. Jerome has actually resided at Presidential Terrace for twenty-five years.
Right.
So he's certainly, you know, very well versed on the operation of the complex itself. Jerome is also fully employed. He's, works at Shaw's Market in Fall River and also Rock Funeral Home and also sometimes at Fairlon. I, I think, I don't know, you said there were two and I think that's what...
That's what got me confused. I didn't know if you were one of the petitions.
Oh, no, I do, I live at President Terrace.
Okay, good.
And I'm, I would've come in with Jerome in a different capacity, but right now I'm here as his friend.
Okay.
And that's what it works about.
Perfect.
I, I, I think Jerome was the, actually I can, I would say that Jerome was the perfect candidate to, you know, throw his hat in a ring and he did. That guy typed up the letter for him.
Nice.
So, and we're hoping that we can congratulate Jerome after a couple minutes.
I don't see any reason why we can't. So is there a motion to appoint Jerome Smith to the housing authority?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think this was...
Thank you, gentlemen.
You got it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I will definitely email Lynn Barabee right now and let her know. I think Jerome, I guess he's gotta go through a period of training and I know that Lynn is all set to assist Jerome with the, the hearing and speech. I would've brought in, usually when we were doing meetings for the tenant organization, Jerome would follow on voice recognition on my tablet.
Awesome.
So I think Lynn and I are just gonna get together. She's more than welcome to use it, smaller than a computer, but I think he's looking forward to Thursday's special meeting with them.
That's exciting.
All right, you, there'll be a letter issued from the selectmen's office.
Awesome.
And then you have to go contact the town clerk and get sworn in and fill out the paperwork up there.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure. But thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you for being so kind to bring Jerome here.
Oh, no, I was asked by Mr. Racine to do that as, you know, no, no, I would've done it to Jerome even if I was a man.
It was very kind of you.
All right, cheers.
Catholic school, fifty-seven years of working with the townies. So it's how it works. And thanks again for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good stuff there. I guess information only. I see...
Mr. Chairman, there's an announcement about the Green Community Grant Award and we are, we will be executing what we have to execute to make sure the town stays eligible. We are also going to a webinar and a Zoom meeting on it to make sure that we dot all the i's, cross all the t's.
Right, so, yeah, ninety-five K, free money to the town. So that's good stuff there. So thank you very much. Next item under information only, Mr. Rick Tripillo, right? Is that how you pronounce it?
Tripillo, it sounds Italian, but a Polish, so.
Hey, Jean Dolby, right?
Jean Dolby, Jean Quill.
So, look, you know, we're kind of walking a fine line of getting in political candidates and all that type of stuff, but one, you're more than welcome to come in, talk about who you are, make it less campaigning, but introduce yourself to the board and, you know, I think that will be covered.
I appreciate that very much. Again, Rick Tripillo, I'm running to be the next state representative from the Tenth Bristol here on the South Coast. Why I'm running for this position is, first and foremost, my interest in taxes and this is gentleman tax chooses. I got into this race when my opponent, not being political, made a comment that he was more concerned about bankers and... that he was more concerned about bankers and bond ratings than reducing our gasoline taxes in this inflationary period. And I thought that was particularly insensitive when a lot of people are truly suffering. So I said, I'm going to run for state representative. I've lived and worked in the South Coast for 30 years. I know the community, which covers the great city of New Bedford, Slough of New Bedford, part of Acushnet, Fairhaven, and the Trittown. So first and foremost, I want to work in the legislature to reduce taxes, both at the gas pump and overall within the state of Massachusetts. State of Massachusetts currently has $8.1 billion in excess funds, taxpayers' dollars. Those dollars should be returned to the people of the state, no question about it. The legislature, to my surprise, after negotiating the budget, was going to give us a $250 gift card out of the excess $3 to $4 billion that should be returned to individuals within the Commonwealth. So my first and foremost job will be to reduce taxes within the legislative process. Secondly, I stand with our police. First and foremost, the Police Reform Act was more punitive than it was proactive. It did nothing to support our police officers with gun violence, domestic violence, helping to fight the fentanyl issue that we have across the South Coast. So I would like to work with the legislature to say, how do we get the police across from New Bedford to Rochester, the tools to work within the community to fight the issues that we're facing? And those issues are rather significant. Throughout the campaign, the police have noticed that. And I want to earn, not won, earned a wonderful endorsement, which was from the Massachusetts Police Association, endorsed my candidacy on a unanimous vote. So I was very proud of that. I earned that recognition from the police. So if elected, I will work with our police departments to say, how do we get funds to the police to do a better job for the community? Lastly, infrastructure. There are so many needs for infrastructure improvement in the South Coast. The New Bedford Bridge, our South Coast rail system. A new issue coming up with the train coming into New Bedford, it was never voted on. How do you like that? We've spent billions of dollars, and all of a sudden, oops, there was never a vote taken. So now the city of New Bedford is going to have to take a special vote, $100,000, to have that approved. So myself as a businessperson, my background, why I believe I will be very effective as a legislature. I was president of a international firm based in Tokyo. I was general manager, executive vice president of a large manufacturing firm in the industrial park. I ran a division at Xerox. I've also started three very successful businesses, two located here on the South Coast. So I know how to manage a business, I know how to make a payroll, I know how to be innovative. So I want to bring that business leadership into that role with my knowledge of the South Coast to be creative, to do something good for the South Coast. I've always felt in working down here on the South Coast that we were looked at last, not first. So as a state representative, I'll fight for the South Coast first. May I answer any questions? And also, thank you, town administrator, for setting up this.
Yeah, thanks for being here. But I think, you know, from a town perspective, my colleagues will speak, you know, they can speak for themselves. But I think, you know, the road, we just, we just heard about, you know, where we stand with Chapter 90.
Correct.
You know, we've got a main thoroughfare, South Main Street runs right through our town. We've got Sloker Street. So we're looking to, you know, improve the infrastructure. And I think that's a, that's a huge, that would be a huge priority for the town.
Correct.
The road infrastructure.
There is a tremendous, tremendous amount of federal money available. When I did research on that, the state of Massachusetts can receive up to $20 billion from President Biden's infrastructure bill. That's for roads, bridges, infrastructure spending. So whomever is the state representative, it behooves all of us to fight for those dollars for roads. We have PJ Keating, that has been an ongoing issue. You know, maybe how to come up with an innovative solution to that issue, egresses, exits, et cetera. But there's $20 billion available to this state if you have somebody dedicated as a businessperson to fight for it, to go after it. So I know how to fight for that. I'm a businessperson, I know how to go after those dollars.
Right.
Mr. Gasper?
You, you hit on, nail it on the head, right? I'm a big infrastructure guy. I mean, we've been pushing for infrastructure. We have 43, the last time I checked, there was roughly 43,000 feet of 100-year-old water pipe in the town of Acushnet. Unacceptable. We're starting, this board's starting to address that issue, but it's very expensive water infrastructure. So, you know, when you're elected, come back and see us, and hopefully, we can, we can persuade you to go to that federal government, get us some millions of dollars, and we can do some water infrastructure together, my friend.
I will fight like hell for that, I promise you, Mr. Gasper.
I appreciate that.
And, yes, sir?
I'd just like to say hello, welcome.
And congratulations on your election.
Thank you very much. I'm just really excited. I've spent my whole life watching the representatives of Acushnet on the state level, really just kind of backburner everything. And it was nice to see what Mr. Hendricks did over his tenure so far. I know it's going to be a little different now that Acushnet's split in that, two districts.
Correct.
But I'm just really happy that there's a lot of people getting out there and showing initiative because we're going to be able to hold you to task when the election comes.
Political leaders need to be held to task. There is so much that needs to be done, as Mr. Gasper just mentioned, with infrastructure, with dollars that are available. If there was ever a time that the Commonwealth, the town of Acushnet, could seize the moment it's now with the federal funds that are available. I would just like to close by saying, throughout this election process, I've had a ball. First time running for office, I've thoroughly enjoyed meeting all of the people in the area. This past week, I was out at Stop and Shop, Passan O'Flyas, and you've all campaigned, and you've met a lot of different people. A woman came up to me and says, Rick, why are they calling you a Republican? And I said, that's a great question. I says, my opponent said that in our recent debate over in Matafoys, when I brought up the issue of reducing taxes. And I looked at the woman and I said, is reducing taxes a bad thing? She says, no, I want my taxes reduced. I says, is reducing gas taxes a bad thing? She said, no. I said, so that's what incumbents try to do when they come in to shake the tree. So I'm not going to be one of 160 representatives singing from the same song sheet. If I'm elected, I'm going to go to Beacon Hill, and I'm going to shake the tree. They're going to hear different ideas for innovation. Maybe we should have built a high-speed train instead of a slow-moving diesel engine. Maybe we should have built a bridge 20 years ago. Maybe we should fight for $20 billion in federal funding. So I'm a businessperson. I'm a Democrat. I'm going to fight for the little person, and I'm going to fight to get big things done.
Excellent. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Gentlemen, thank you for what you do for the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Great experience.
Thank you.
All right. Gentlemen, anything else?
Mr. Chairman, as you recall, because we skipped around a bunch, but if you would like to, if we have approved some minutes.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve June 21st, 2022, June 29th, 2022, July 13th, 2022, and June 1st, 2022. I believe that was a combined Soil Board and Selectmen's meeting.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. There's nothing else other than to set the date for the next meeting?
Jim?
Yeah, the 13th?
Selectmen's announcement.
Sure.
I just want to speak to the folks over at Crompton Street, Hyrum Street, Boylston Street. The mailwoman lost her cell phone somewhere in that proximity, she believes. So if you are in that proximity of Boylston, Hyrum, Crompton Street, could you please, if you found that cell phone, it's locked, could you please bring it to the Acushnet post office and return it there? So our mailwoman can get her phone back. Thank you very much, if, if that's where it is. And if anybody else is watching, you found a phone, that's probably whose it is. So if you want to bring it to the Acushnet post office and check. Ms. Leonard left, but it was her birthday today, I was going to wish her a happy birthday. I'm going to wish Mr. Hinckley a happy birthday. It's his birthday tomorrow, so happy birthday, Mr. Hinckley.
Thank you very much.
And I just want to say, before we close out the meeting, have a happy, safe Labor Day weekend. Be good, be safe. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gasper covered pretty much everything on that one.
Yes. All right, September 13th.
It'll be a Tuesday.
Yep.
At five.
At five, does that work for you a lot?
No, you can drop back there at four.
Back at four o'clock.
Today was just an on-ball.
On, on.
Okay. Can I call timeout?